கத்துடைய பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மகிமை உண்டாவதாக
கல்வி பீதி தேவையான நம்மை விட்டு
இந்த ஆசுரதிகபட்ட இரண்டாம் நால் மாலை வெளியிலே உங்களை சந்திபதில் கிருஸ்தோகள் மைள்ச்செடைகிறோம்
நாம் நாம்பின் கிருஸ் மேடியை இந்த செய்தியை விட்டு வரும்
கத்துடைய பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மகிமை உண்டாவதாக
கல்வி பீதி தேவையான நம்மை விட்டு
நேற்று ஆண்டவராக ஏசுக்ருஸ் கட்டிளைட்ட மூன்று சகாரிங்களை நாம் செய்திட்டோம்
நேற்று நாம் நாம்பின் கிருஸ் மேடியை விட்டு வரும்
முதலாவது அவர் அசுத்த ஆவிகளை ஒரு மனிதனுடைய வாள்விலே இருந்து அகற்றும் படியாக அவர் கட்டிளையிடுகிற
All the darkness of your life will be changed.
Your life will be changed.
The confession of the failures of your life will be changed.
You will make a determination in your life. You will start to make a journey towards Jesus. You will step towards the Lord. This is the second birth in a man's life. All these kinds of journey are not found favorable in all the person's life. And how many persons' lives is this journey found smooth? In the Christian life.
And even this Christian life.
Or the worldly life. If you don't care, we can count them with fingers, only few are having it smooth. And Lord Jesus asked them to enter into the ship and make your voyage. And the spiritual life is explained as a life upon the sea.
You might have asked and heard, many ships are sinking. You know that many ships did not attain the shore. But how your life is found in your voyage? When we look upon Gospel according to St. Luke. I want to keep the fourth command which Jesus spoke. When we look upon Luke chapter eight. Verses from twenty-two to twenty-five. Now he came to pass uncertainty, that he went into a ship with his disciples, and he said unto them, "Let us go over unto the other side of the lake," and they launched forth; but as they sailed, he fell asleep, and there came down a storm of wind on the lake, and they were filled with water, and were in jeopardy; and they came to him, and awoke him, saying, "Master, master, we perish." Then he arose and rebuked the wind and the raging of the water, and they ceased, and there was a calm; and he said unto them, "Where is your faith?" And they being upright, wondered, saying one to another, "What manner of man is this? For he commanded even the winds and the water, and they obeyed him." Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. They are starting their journey, saying like this, "Let us go over unto the other side." When they are going in that way, there was suddenly a great storm. That came down a storm in the lake. And within a short time, all the waters were entering into the ship. See the status of their heart then. And today, many persons' lives were not found smooth. They are trying that their life will be changed favorable when even after their marriage. They are always trying that their life should be smooth. But their life is always keep on going in a question mark. And he is not able to make his journey with all kind of favorable nature. Beloved ones, how your life is found in this evening? What happened? There came down a great storm upon the sea, and there was a raging of the wind. Now Jesus Christ arose there, and what did he do there? As Jesus Christ was there in that place, there was a great command revealed. He commanded even the winds and the water, he asked them to keep silence. What manner of man is this? For he commanded even the winds and the water. He is the Lord Jesus Christ who is found as the one and only God. Without him, there is no salvation. If a man wants to pass unto the other side, in the midst of all his raging and silence, he wants Jesus in his life. Beloved friend, you are expecting a life which is found in a smooth nature. And you are taking many efforts for that. You are roaming here and there for that. You are praying for that. You are going many pilgrimages. But is there the Lord who is shouting against the wind? Is there a Lord who is rebuking the wind? Without Jesus, even after your efforts, you cannot attain the other side. Perhaps you may achieve anything in your business. And you may be achieving many other things in the world. But in the next part of your life, you cannot achieve anything in your life. The one and only way for that is Jesus Christ, the Lord. Jesus told that I am the life, the way, and the truth in your life. And here, against two powers, he is commanding. And we are looking upon the fourth and the fifth commandment here. And first thing, he is commanding to the unclean spirit to go away from a man's life. And second command is to come to the other side. And thirdly, he is commanding that he should repent. And now he is commanding against the wind. Two kinds of powers will be striving always with the man's life. One is the wind, the second one is the water. You might have made a journey upon the sea, and you might have heard about the people who are making the journey. And few people, as soon as they entered into the boat, they will be omitting. And only people like Jonah will be slipping as soon as they entered into the ship. Likewise, many people are going like that, and they are losing their achievements. But two kinds of powers which are against the man's life is. One is wind, another is water. In the other part, we have to look. Two powers which are striving with the man's life. One is sin, the other one is burden. When we look upon Hebrews chapter twelve verse one. And one is sin, the other one is a burden, which is making a man to be impressed in a state. And even though he may be a believer or not, he will be having these kinds of two powers. Spirit against the flesh and the flesh against the spirit, they have been appointed each other against. Even in your life, are you having these kinds of two powers? Do you face the winds and water in your life journey? For you to understand, I mentioned about the wind and the water as sin and burden. These two things always striving with the man, it will not allow man to achieve his target. And one is the power to resist, and the other one is the power to stop him. This wind will be resisting him. This water will be stopping you. Where he will go? That is why he is frustrated and he is suiting himself. Man who knows Jesus, he is always praising God, and he is making his journey up. All the others, even many efforts, they cannot achieve anything. And he will not be able to touch the wind. Beloved friend, what kind of sin you are having in your life? Can you be able to control yourself? Can you control the sins that are found in your characters and flesh? Can you control your thinkings? You are trying to control many people, but are you able to control yourself? You are sitting here. And how many of you are found here, how many people does not know it? Even if your mind can travel up to America because of your thinking. It will go back to your home, whether you have locked your home or not. That is why a man told like this, that a mind is a monkey. This monkey both, it will be in the meeting, it will be in the house also. You don't have the enough courage and power to resist your sin. You don't have the power to control your mind. But this is found in the Christianity. Your power to control your mind is found inside Christianity. You cannot attain this in yoga. A man cannot achieve that. Only a child of God will be able to perish and destroy sin. He is promising that he will not drink in the morning. In the morning, there will not be any good man like him. Even our sisters used to say like this, that our husband will be a god if he is not drinking. The next evening, he will be drunk. He is not able to control the sin which is striving against him. Another power is burden. It is suppressing him. He is not able to do anything. And tomorrow, how we can face that? How you will deal this problem? And what kind of solution for this? And will you be made right? Will you become out of this problem? When you are coming inside this kind of problem, Satan speaks unto you, you cannot. You should die with it. This is a cunning doctrine of Satan. Beloved child of God. Life is found inside the Christianity to overcome the sin and the burden. Keep your burdens upon him, he will take care of you. Keep all your worries upon him, he will be encouraging you. Forgiving sins and two, making all your sins to be forgiven, he is having the power. It is enough that you are confessing your sins, he is having the power to forgive you and to deliver you. The sin and the burden is making a man's journey to be found hindered. And few people, because of this burden, they are found sick. The worries of the heart of the believers are making even them found to be in sick nature.
And you have liking the righteousness, you have hated the sins. Hebeseer, naangge padinangai parkumbele. When we look up on Ephesians chapter four verse fourteen. Tandaramaagiyakaachu ende naan parkuram. That had been called as a wind which had been given as name as cunning nature. Pisasinn tandarangalirukkare. And there are cunning natures of devil. Manshunudiyatandarangalirukkare. And there are cunning natures of man. Sarpattin tandarangalirukkare. And cunnings of serpents are there. Onakulliyasilatandaramanasuvavangalirukkare. Even in you there are cunningful characters are there. Indhatandrangal unudiyavalkiin lakshayate uney adayavudamal chadukum. These cunning natures will be resisting you to go forward in attaining the target of your life. Yakob mudalamaadigara aaravasanati parkumbele. When we look up on James chapter one verse six. Sandegam oru kaachu. And doubt is a wind. Indhatandegam unudiyavalkile vandrichina. When you face these kind of doubts. Aliparunakuthukumvarad. After that you won't get sleep. Vittapootuvenga, vittaputidrapootulannu oru sandegam vandurum. You might have locked your room but you will be having a doubt upon your bed that you don't lock it. Onakuthirumbathirumanthand sandegam vara aramuchurum. Again and again you will be having the doubts. Maniviyasandegamputuva. You will doubt your wife. Ulliyakarangalasandegamputuva. You will doubt the servants of God. Viswasiygalasandegamputuva. You will doubt the believers. Osondappulliyaveeni sandegamputaramuchuruvaa. You will doubt your own child. Unudipurushalasandegamputuva. You will doubt your husband. Abaru onumela sandegamputte uney viliyavudamavvittapootivutti velaki pidiyavara. He will be doubting you and he will be locking you that you will not go out. Idellala sandegithrundiyapritibalipugal. These are all the reflections of the doubts. Endhanera thuluneyave watchupanna aramuchuruvaga. And always keep on they will be watching you. Ilavatal niyae machungal watchupanna aramuchuruvaa. Or otherwise you will be watching the others always. Idellala unudiyakkaraypayanathetadukakudiya oru aniyesakthinudiyatakkudal. These are all the attack of a strange power which will be resisting you to go forward in your way. Arumiyana indha kaachu unudiyavalkile viisikundrukkareda. Beloved ones, do you have this wind in your life? Oruvala tandraladikaradubola irukum, alukupinnala oru hero kliethon undu enbadhi ningalpurindhu kula vaidam. Perhaps it may be like a breeze but behind that there is an hero kliethian. Anegar valki smutha damboyidrinjija, naanipandham boyalasikirukkare. Many people's life are going in a smooth way but now they have been entangled in a storm. Ulaga valkiyyapidiyirukkare, viswasa valkiyyapidiyirukkare. What kind of worldly life is found and what kind of life of faith is found? Indha kaachugalai kadindugalakudiya oru devam undu. There is a god who will rebuke this wind. Sandegan ettana kudumgalaprichirukkutirima? Do you know many, how many families have been separated because of this doubt? Sandegan ettana toliladhibirgalapriitthirukkare tirima? Do you know how many partners of business have been separated by this doubt? Sandegan ettana kachigalai odachirukkutirima? Do you know how many parties have been divided because of this doubt? Sandegan ettana rajyengalapriitthirukkare tirima? Do you know how many kingdoms have been separated because of this doubt? Sandegan ettana yuttangalile tolviyekundundrukkare tirima? Do you know how many defeats have been made in the battle because of these doubts? Innikunguad sandegam unudiyavalkile vendhal, niy boisyaramattai. Even tonight if you face this doubt, you will not attain your target. Naapatiyattam sengidhey aalavasanathile parkumbele. When we look up on Psalms forty eight verse seven. Indha kaachu adikumbele unudiviswasa valkiye ootanjisukkunurapoyivada. When this wind is blowing against you, your life of faith will be broken down. Indika anegarudiyavalkile viswasmillamal boyivuttarak. And many people lost their faith in your lives. Viswasmennum kapalay odakya kudiya daana indha kaachu. And this is a faith, this is a wind which is breaking against the faith of. Unudinambikaya tagartu odikare. It is breaking away your hope. Unudinichyathetagartu odikare. It is breaking away your confirmation. Unudiyedirbarpay suniyamai maachivudikare. It is changing all your expecting nature. Arumiyana nanbanee unudiyavalkile indha kaachu viisukareda. Beloved friend, do you have this kind of wind in your life? Asutthavigulidiyapooratthangal. And the striving of the unclean spirits. Porlasinudiyatakkudelgal. And the attack of the covetousness. Paavathrundiyapoorattham. And striving of sin. Sandegathrundiyakaachu. And a wind because of doubts. Nambikayilai. You don't have any hope. Ippidi patten nalavaratthile echeneve challapatturukkare. How many of you have been put inside this kind of state? Indha kaachu adikumbele enna nadakuntirima? When this wind is blowing against what will happen, you know? Bayangaramananashtangalakunduvarukkare. It is bringing great losses. Yop mudalamaadigaram. And Job chapter one. Patthanvathavasanati parkumbele. When we look up on verse nineteen. Indha kaachu bayangaramaha viisi andhviittay odaitu uttad. There was a very great storm against the house and it broke the house. Yop viddingradu oru kurayivudala. And the house of Job was not a house because of roof. Ilavatadu oru oduvoodala. And it was not a roof made of bricks. Avan oru kodisvaran. And he was a millionaire. Anan enna nadandade? But what happened? Ankaachu viisinaboluadu andhviuddu odaindunurangi vilunduvutada. As the wind was blowing against that house, that house was broken down. Unudinambikayesaidapaduthukudiya wallamay. And the power which will be able to destroy your faith. Oru beriyanastham. A great loss. Yappidiyurukunnyosuchu paranga. See how it might be there. Ivigalukummathile andhviittanthapthupulligalam setupunaraga. In the midst of all these things, the ten children in the midst of the house had been perished. Indha kaachinudiyatakkudal unudiyavarungala nambikayetagartu odikare. And the attack of this wind is making your hope to be lost. Indhanigalkala nambikayematharamala? Not only the hope of this present tense. Andhpulligalallankundruvutu uttad. It destroyed all the children also. Avundiyfutcher avundiyavarungalamay andhasantadigaltha onume illamupoyivuttarak. His future is that generation, they have been changed as nothing. Anaal andavara ge esu christo indha kaachayi, aver katlayitar, irayadhe nille endusunnan. But our Lord Jesus Christ rebuked against this wind, peace be still. Arumiyana nanbanee unudiyavalkile indha kaachu modukareda, anupinalsan indha kutthuthukunneye kottarkundu vendha. Beloved friend, you are having this kind of wind against your life, that is why the Lord brought you to this meeting. Saivusayudhi indha kaachile adibattavrala esuvaipoodipudithukolanga. Please catch hold of Jesus those who are inside this wind. Unudiyavalkile idu oru arumiyavanasandarpam. This is a blessed opportunity in your life. Kaachu thanakistlamanadathile viisinalam, adakattupaduthukudiya oru devamirukkara. Even the wind is blowing against this wind and there is a lord who is controlling this. Anudikattupattile vaykukudiya sarvalallavaro oruvarukkara. There is an almighty god who is making this wind to be under his control. Avansollaaagum, aver katlayadnirkum. It will be as such according to his words. Inge naanggaavudukattalai kaachukaavarkatlayitar. Here forthly he commanded unto the wind. Andhvaathay kettodunna andhkaachu apriyane ninruvutada. As the winds were hearing the words of God, it obeyed him. Adudan devunudiyavallamay. That was the power of God. Andavudiyasarvalallamayadunirubikare. It is proving the almighty nature of God. Adutthavarkalatthukakatlayitar. And nextly he is commanding to the wind, water. Andhvaathay kettodunna andhkadal kondalipu apriyameidiyavada. And hearing his word, this raging of the sea is be still. Indha jalathinudiyakondalipu ede kanbikare. What is raging of this wind and water shows? Yesaya ayimpatiyeeliduvalile parkumbele. When we look up on Isaiah chapter fifty seven verse twenty. Kondalikkum kadalai pola irukkara. Wicked people are like the raging of the sea. Indikoru manidhanudiyavalkile, visasunudiyapooratthakadhi, innorumanshana onukuravam bayangarama porar. And today in a man's life, more than the spirits of devil, a man are working against him. Orutham businessla konjanala arkana, avanapidikya. If a man has found good in his business, he will not be liked by the others. Oruthanallagamesla munneranana, avanaveladavadamata. If a man is going forward in his games, he will not be allowed to go. Konja, thanavada oruthan lesa oru step mala bitana, avanayevavu sarukavikinama, evavu sarukavikare da manshunudiyapolitics. And the man's politics is that he should have to make the others that they may not go forward in their life. Indikparanga thunmarkarakal perigirukkara. And today we can see the wicked are increased. Namudiyajanangalukuravam thunmarkarakal adhimaga irukkara. Against our people, many wicked people are there. Indiketstana verukinnege manshunudiyapooratthangalirukkutirima? And today, how many of the people are having the raging of the people? Kudumbathar, amundevittarae avanukusathur. Even his family household are found as an adversary. Kooda parandavanay avanakali banunna trypantra. And his own brother is trying to kill him. Sondathayidavapune pilligal nesikumattakara. And own father and mother are not loving their children. Betcha pilligale parentsakittavidrakakira. And their own children are not allowing their parents. Anasamivutle padicham oru tagupanakundupavi oru bostanle vittitu pora. Recently I have read like this that a man is taking his father and he is allowing him to go in the bostan. Andhoni vittiyarakana oni avakathurad, thambiyavittitu varada, vittitu varada, vittitu varadan kathurad. And as he was getting down from his vehicle, the father is shouting at his own son, you should not leave me. Avan poite vanditupaidha. And he left the place. Ningalpadichingalilayan tirila? I don't know whether you have read this or not. Abin thalaal vaisanavarkathurad, thambiyavpoirada, enakadharan tiriyadu, urthiriyadu, indharan tiriyadun kathurad, avan poiya poitda. This old man is crying upon his son, you should not go because I don't know the place, but he left the place. Angerndanavallam poi, ennapay, yaaravane, nooni engi vittitu varani, yaampeetha pilladaaya, naanindu urulendu vendha, enniyavvittalayetukamattinti, urukani podamattinti, enadhiriyadu, arathranipichadutupalachikun, vittitu varan. Then he replied like this that it was my own child, he is leaving me in this state and he asked me to ask harms. Manshunudiyavalkiyyapidiyayukubathintha? See the life of a man. Indika anegarudiyavalkiyyatarangutupoyivutada. And today many people's life are being without state. Avundevittarae, avanukusathur. His household is found as an adversary. Evavu nirbandhamaan nalavaran yosuchu paranga. See the wretched situation. Arumiyana indiki pilligaludiyanbu, manshunudiyamanshunudiyanbu sutthama maripoyivutada. Beloved ones, the love of the children, love of man is totally changed. Indika anegar thanudiyaparentsan nesikarede illa. And many children are not loving their parents. Anegar pilligalanesikarede illa. Many are loving their children. Purushananesipade illa. They are not loving the husband. Manivyanesipade illa. And they are not loving their wife. Evavu nirbandhamaan nalavaran yosuchu paranga. See the miserable situation. Orathathal oru payya vandha avanappavayangarama adichta. In one place and his own son bet his father. Adichchi. And beating. Kadavukkavili thalita. And he cast him out of the door. Thirumbavaravthirumbavadi chilidhutu compound kitta kunduvanda. Again he bet him and he brought him near the compound wall. Aba orusunna thambiyaniruthun sunna. And he asked him like this. Yen kadana? He asked why? Yen, yen, yen niruthunav, veliyapo sunna. Why, why I should stop, you should go. Naanayangappava adichirngappa, ana gatevarekithan kunduvande veliyathalalan sunna. Even I have bet my father but I didn't make him to go away out of the gate. Neenathan niyisinge, adu onakuthirumbaval lifele varukare. Whatever you have done in your life is coming again in your life. Niyethavethachi, adu nichima aruthu daahano. What you have shown you should have to repeat. Ivaru orukalathil avanappavadi chikke gatevittu veliyathalalan, ana gatevare kundavara, niipenneye adavudan taanti veliyakunduvaraya niruthun sunna. And he didn't put his father out of the gate, that is why he is asking him not to cast him out of the gate. Indikumanidavalkiyyengapoyidshinbathingala? See the life of man today. Thunmarkarakal perigirukkara oru kalam. And it is a time in which wicked are increased. Indikinamudiyabusiness allaarkana, matavunka, avanunka businesska disturbai ilattalo, avanala adu porukamudiyala. If even today if our life business is found good and he cannot bear that. Indhatfieldla vartanallarunnaalo, avanavada potipoda mudiadavano, adu porukamudiyamay, ayadavu sayundan trypantra. In whatever field if a man is found good, the other persons are trying that he should have to be destroyed. Even ministry, ide porattham, ondipolitics, diplomatic, indhvelakalai irundudide daaruke. Even in the ministry we find the same politics. Indrekkinkooda unudiyavalkile oru kaachu, oru tanneer porattham irunduk, kadalin porattham irundukundeyirukkare. Even today in your life, there is a striving of this water. Yoda padimunaavasanathile parkumbele. When we look up on verse thirteen of Judah. Indha kadalai avamana mendu chulukare. And about this water, it had been mentioned as reproach. Idu oru avamana, indikibaranga illaavatchulukali evavu vandhutukkutirima? And see how many reproaches are against the people of God. Ni pakkaadu laani paththan solra, ni nikkaadu arathran ninnan solra, ni seyyadu chenchan solra, omela illaavat paligalallam varukare, karanam unvalkil, indha kadal kondalithukundey varukare. You are getting many kinds of blames against you, you have done, you have not done that, but they are telling like this that you have done that, you are facing these kinds of water in your life. Arumiyana unugidivalkile ningalseyayadu paligal ungalmel varukare. Beloved ones, do you are facing in your life the false excuses or the blames against you? Ningalbhaiputadanga? Fear not. Kaththaniyayam hisarikeravurthakidivamirukkara. Lord, our Lord is going to judge your life. Neethiseyakeravur devanirukkara. And we have a lord who is going to do the righteousness. Oru companyle, oru officele vella bakumbele, oru sakadhan melai illaavu oru kutthathipotthaga. When our brother was working in his company and he got a blame against him. Avar lancha vangitaram sollikadaisla oru melavutthu kutthuthaga. He is getting bribes, this was the complaint against him. Avarku kaisutthamaanavara. And he was not a man of bribes. Avar ramaklinhanda. And he was having a clean hand. Avarku kutthame avar seyyadavara. And he was not man who did mistake. Innorboogila paththanam viswasi. And he was a believer also. Ivarku onume udila suspendmenta. And he was not able to do anything, he was suspended. Avangalukaklearpanni indhcourtle, andhke, idellala ningalangalasutthavan nirubiinga, adukparu ungalakposting tarantanga. And you should prove this that you are righteous, then we will be getting back the position against. Ivar lancha vanganarakirukkukummu nuverisachi. And three witnesses are there that he had got bribes. Yappidiyurukunbaranga? See how much it be. Enkuri nandundu idaya. Inquiry was going on. Kadaisila courtle kundupavi nibadi. At last he was stood in the court. Ivaru vandhupoi vaidhavam jebshutupunara. And in the faitham he was prayed and he was going there. Naan kayyaniyiniyti kasvanglaswami. Lord, I did not stretch my hands in God's bribes. Savachi etnavarde? But how many witnesses are there? Muunusachi varude. Three witnesses are there. Orusaachi na apposin, muunuverna provepaniranga, adavudamunijupochu vela. If there are three witnesses, they will be proving that with that the job is over. Ningal enakaniyayam chinganponara. Lord, you should have to do the righteousness for me. Bayangarama onakkadal kondalipu. A great raging of the sea. Officele arakamal, innikodan ivanukidismiss, suspendkida, ivanukidismissavodu. And all the people in the office were thinking like this that today he is going to be dismissed. Ivar courtle boisanditar. He went to the court. Ana opposite muunuverum courtukvarala. But the three opposite testimonies, witnesses did not come there. Judge kagrar. Judge is asking. Ennaache? What happened? Indhamansal lanchavanganan sunnangale, asachigalvaratun sunna. And let the witnesses come here to prove this man. Avangavakilvandusunnaare. And his lawyer came. Sorry sir. Sorry sir. Ennan kadana? What? Muunuveru varambo da accidentle setupitangan. And the three people on their way itself, they died because of accident. Muunuvera andave, varambo du oruvaanthala vandhrangava, moonuveru spot out, ennapanentherlanana, appantha judge purindhu, neeti, andavare nisinchitar, judgment kuduthitarunna, law, andh judge, avseltar, ni poppa, unakavidhal, naan tirpe kudukavindila, yaar kuduthita, melavallavu kuduthitar. Judge told like this that it is the lord who gave you the judgment, you can go, be delivered. Anala ninga anyayam nadakkunni ningalsoorundupayradanga? Nyayam chigare oru devamuu irukkara. So please go, go down because of all the unrighteousness that you are facing. Unudinyayam hisarikeputu oru neramundu. There is a time in which your things will be incurred. Esusiluvaila tongumoluadu nyayam thallundupoyit. When Jesus Christ was hanging up on the cross, all his judgment had been taken away. Anala ade esu, mathi panirundala chulukara, avar nyayatkuk jayangodukkara varakkamavar soorundupamalkiri esegalaba. But the same Jesus is telling in Matthew chapter twelve that he will be working till the judgment will be giving on. Roman unramadhiyathile pawul chulukara, unudinyayam hisarikeputumbele, adu vetchi adayum. And in Romans chapter three, Saint Paul says it, you will get a victory when you are being incurred of your judgment. Enudinyayam devanathilirukkare endu oruvarun sunna. And one man told like this that my case is up before the lord. Amen, nyayathet visarithe, enakujayathakudukkare devanirukkara endusolunnu, karangalivithu oru aliyasulungal. Amen. Naan idukedhede edukakadu chulukare? Why I am telling this? Indha kadalayumadatta kudiya oru kattarirukkara. There is a lord who is able to rebuke this water also. Thunmarkarudiyapooratthate kattupaduthukudiya sakthiavarkundu. He is having the power to control the wickedness of the wicked. Omelvandha avamana galay maachakudiya devam oruvarirukkara. There is a lord who is going to change all your reproaches. Ungalmel illaavu chulluarananal, ningal bakkyavangala iruppiirka. If they are putting reproaches against you, you will be the blessed. Mathi padinellu padinenchiliparkumbele. When we look up on Matthew chapter seventeen verse fifteen. Indhatanirudiyapoorattham uney sagadikummudiaga eerupaduthuputthu oru porattham. This troubling of this water will be made that you may be destroyed. Adu tanneerle, avani talley, avane kolaysayya parkure. It is trying that this man will be killed in the water. Unudiyavalkile oru pisasinn porattham, uney unudiyanamigala lam eduthuvudikare. And in your life, a striving of a demon, it is taking all the goodness out of you. Adutthadunidu vela uney kollavum, uney aliyyavum, avanvarukara. And the next work of himself is, he is coming there to destroy you. Arumiyana ungalidetnaver, ippidi patthu poratthangalilirukkare. Beloved ones, how many of you are involved in the midst of this striving? Manshunudiyapooratthangal. The striving of men. Uney kundruvuduvan. And I will kill you. Uney aliyyavuduvan. I will destroy you. Unen, naan nichima uney sagadipen. I will surely kill you. Idudan esayakopitachulla oru vaathai. This was the word which was told to Esa. Naatkalvarum, naan uney kundruvuduvan. And days will come, I will kill you. Anal devan ennaseedha tirima? But do you know what Jesus did? Ippidushunna renduveru opuravakiivuttar. The lord made these two be reconciled. Andhesaavukulla kondalithirunna kadalai kattaramarthipodda. The raging of the sea in the Esa was made still by the lord. Namudiyavallamay yappidi patthu tirima? Do you know the power of our god Jesus? Avar kaachukum jalathukum katlayadukudiya devam. He is the god who is able to command into the water and the wind. Nothiyaalam sengidhetthewasi paham. Read Psalm hundred and seven. Iruvatiyavasana. Verses twenty nine and thirty.
He make the storm occur so that the waves thereof are still, then are they glad because they be quiet, so he bringeth them unto their desired heaven.
Kondalipay amarthukara.
He make the storm occur.
Avargalinaadina thuraimuguttil konduboi sharekara. And he is bringing them to the place in which they are desired. Unudiyakkaraypayanathile, niyedirbarkaralakshayate adaya, avar unakothuvisaykara. In your spiritual journey to attain your target, the lord god is helping you. Onekaachu, matthandrala jalap. One is wind, the other one is water. Idu naanggaayindu andhuvudikattalai. These are all the fourth and the fifth commandments of the lord. Indha valki payanathile, avar unakothuvisayidivut. In this life journey after helping you. Unakka adutthu oru kattalai, unakka oru kattalai kudukkara. He is giving a command unto you. Unnoodu poradinavallamayalai paththu, adukkakatlayadukkara. And he is giving commands to the things that are striving against your life. Onekaachukum, matthandrala jalathukum kadalukum katlayadukkara. One to the wind and the other to the water. Ippoludu unudiyavalkiye amaydiyavakiivutada. Now your life is found still. Ilaiparudalai ni munnerikundurukkara. You are going forward with rest. Indhanera thuluneye cheyavendhi, adutthad devanukukilpadiyavendhi, adutthakattalai enna? In this moment, you should have to obey to the commandment of the lord. Akkaraypayanathile, ni manandriminalamattum bodad. In departing to the other side, not only you are repenting. Niyanaasannam edukavendhi davasiyam. It is essential for you to get baptized. Mathi yirvatiyattam adigarthile, patthanvathivastanangali parkumbele. In Matthew chapter twenty eight verses nineteen and twenty, when we look upon. Sagala jadiyamci saraki. Go ye and make call the others disciples. Pidaakumaran, barisutthavi, namathinale, avulkiyanaasannam kuduthu. And you should baptize the others in the name of father, son and the holy ghost. Naan katlayita, avayum kai kullumadi, avulkiyupadesam bandhingal. Preach that they may be following my doctrine. Idu adutthoru command. This is another command. Indha vaathakeenikilpadiyinde, aagavendam. You must obey to this word. Idai mattamarkangal yappidiyavarnikirukkare. And in what the way the other religions are explaining this. Avan punniyasnannam, punidasnannam, iprinalay aramikirukkara. And they are going behind holy pilgrimages. Avangalallam punidasnannatthayudukunduvarukkara. And they are taking, immersing into the holy water. Anal idai vedam ennachulukare. But about this, what the word of God says. Pidaakumaran, barisutthavi, namathinale, niyanaasannam eduthu, andhuvudikattalaki, niyilpadiyavendam. You should have to be baptized in the name of father, son and the holy ghost and you should obey unto the word of God. Indikumkuada ulagathile palavidumana nyanaasannangali ningalparkala. Even today you can find many kinds of baptism in the world. Oru, oru selatthilipu nyanaasannam kudukkara. And few are giving sprinkling baptism. Oru selat esuvi namathile kudukkara. Few are giving baptism in the name of Jesus. Barisutthavi, paradharu, nyanaasannam kudukkara. And people who have not had received the anointing are giving baptism. Yaar yappidi kuduthal, adapatti namukkakavalayilla. Who may ever may be giving baptism in whatever way, but that is not a matter. Yesi ennachunna. But my Jesus, what did he say? Pidaakumaran, barisutthavi, namathinale, avulkiyanaasannam kudungal. Give baptism in the name of the father, son and the holy ghost. Andavukuduthasnannam yappidi patthu tirima? What kind of baptism which the lord gave? Mark padinaru, padinarinbadi. According to Mark chapter sixteen verse sixteen. Viswasa mullavanagi nyanaasannam bettavan rachikapaduva. Man who is having faith and be baptized will be saved. Viswasi adavano, aakkanikittu utpaduva. Man who is not having faith will be condemned. Naan nettu chunneen. I yesterday told. Manandthirumbamal oruvarunki nyanaasannam kudukakuda. Without conversion, a man should not be baptized.
who was getting baptism and Philip had given baptism to him but what happened there and in his life there was no changing he was in his state as such he had been baptized but he had not repented how it be? if it is found in your life, how you will be? in Acts of the Posters chapter 8 verse 30 he believed and got baptism but in 8th chapter 8 verse 21 your heart is not right, it had been told unto him in 22nd verse repent therefore he told after believing Jesus, he got the baptism, but he had not been repented there when we look up on verse 23 and he was persevering in the bondage of sin and if you have got the correct baptism you might have been delivered out of the sins and your sins might have been forgiven if your sins are not forgiven without the correct conversion, you should not be baptized as you are getting an employment, you should not go and take a baptism in a church as a powerful man had told unto you, you should not go and take baptized and understanding the truth, you should obey after you getting the correct baptism you are getting a chance to go into the kingdom of heaven if not, your baptism will not help you you should receive it in the correct way and when we look upon John's chapter 3 in verse 23 as there were much waters, he gave baptism in that place and the baptism it shows that you are passing over the banks you should have to come out of the sinful life you should have to come out of the fashions of this world you should have to come out of the sinful strafings and because of the lust, you should have to be escaped out of the fashions of this world if your baptism is not delivering you out of the sinful life, it will be changed in vain when you are taking this baptism, what will happen unto you? your sins are forgiven you are cleansed out of your sins in your conscience, you are not having an understanding that there is sin in your life if you are taking the correct baptism for your sake, the Lord is open in the heavens beloved brother and sister it is not enough that you are repented in your life you should get the holy baptism, you should get the correct baptism in your life you should take the baptism in the correct person in the right way, you should obey the words of God and you should be baptized when you get the correct baptism, the sickness will be taken away for the correct baptism, there will be a death penalty to the Satan what the word of God says? in Romans chapter 6 in the correct baptism, we are making a funeral service for the sin and that is a funeral service and you are dying for the sin that is a very important thing which is going on there that is why when you are coming out, you are giving another name the old man had been died that is why the word of God says and removing the old man and you should have to take the newness of life, that is a new man in your life with that, there is a full stop for the sinful life and there is a funeral service for the sinful man and there is a place in which you are putting away the old man without all these things, if you are thinking baptism, there will not be any use in it and in the place where Pastor Haruldas is giving baptism, even in the water itself, they will be dancing and it will be dancing on and he will be telling like this, I will be giving baptism for one after the other, you should go before that after that, you cannot enter inside him your time is over and you should have to be baptized in this way and after getting baptism, if it is coming in, what will be happening? your baptism is not and wherever you have been, your failure had been, your process had been failed and after entering into the church, you should not be immersed as the brother is inside the sister's house, he should not be immersed as he is staying in your house, you should not immerse him for the sake of marriage, you should not do that and even I have did many things and I have made the failures and that is not the correct thing according to the word of God a commandment of God is not, you should be baptized alone, but you should have to follow the doctrine as I have commanded if the baptism is a commandment, you should have to submit your life, that is also another commandment and that will be the end for all the striving of your life crossing the Red Sea is a sign of baptism only on that day, Pharaoh and his chariots had been meeting an end all the powers of Pharaoh which were following you all the powers of slavery the powers which are striving against you to catch hold of you and all these things will be having an end in the baptism when you are taking the correct baptism your sickness might have gone away that was a sign of the leopard of Nahamun had been taken away and why he had been called to be immersed for seven times that was a sign of the baptism in the newtism period but we are not immersing a man for seven times what does it show? it shows the seven steps of the conversion and that was the that was the reconciliation and that is the confirmation about the forgiveness of sins only if you are coming to the seven steps which I am going to tell you, you will be healed out of the Namas you might be a mighty man according to the world till now, you are not baptized, you are a leper according to the word of God and you are having a fail, a sign of failure and you are a symbol of death and when you are getting the parakarak baptism, you are being joined in the cross, that is a symbol of triumph glory be to the holy name of the Lord when you are coming to this part, what will be the next birth or next part? what is the next command for this? Acts of the Posters chapter 1 when we look up on verse 5 what had been told there? the next command seventh command
Apostle 15 John truly baptized with water, but he shall be baptized with the Holy Ghost, not made his hands
glory be to the holy name of the Lord and all this baptism and the anointing of the Holy Ghost had been called as baptism what is the correct meaning of that? in the water baptism, as you are immersing inside water, in this baptism of Holy Ghost, you should have to be immersing in Holy Ghost this promise of the Father shows the anointing of the Holy Ghost there are many where ministering but calling everybody, he told that without having the promise of the Father to be fulfilled, you should not pass unto the other side everybody were tarrying in the upper chamber of the Jerusalem Holy Spirit descended upon them beloved ones, how many of you have come inside this kind of birth today? and now only you are coming inside the current growth of the Christianity when you are baptized, you are just a member of a church or otherwise, you may be a member of this Palaeopeter church but when you are baptized of Holy Ghost, you are becoming a member of in the heaven until now, you will be having a name in the book of life, that is a book of lamb till then, you will be a member in this world, only after that, only you will become a member in heaven or otherwise, you are becoming a member in the body of Christ how many of you have come inside this birth of the Holy Ghost? how, why a man is in the need of the Holy Ghost? and not only you are speaking in tongues because of the Holy Ghost and one group are saying like this, it is not compulsory thing that you should speaking in tongues and after that, what you are going to speak? what prophetizer says? and he will speak with these people with the tongues, what does it mean? and Acts of the Posters chapter 2 verse 33 says that you are seeing a Holy Spirit which we can see and experience and Paul says that I am speaking in tongues more than all of you, what does it mean? a man asks how a man who is born out of a woman can be found clean in Romans chapter 7, Paul says I want to do the goodness but goodness is not found in me I have been baptized I want to do the goodness but I cannot do it in my flesh, there is no goodness but I am doing the sin again and again, which I am not desiring if it be so, I am not a believer I am a wretched man how this man can overcome? what Romans chapter 8 verse 2 says? the law of the living God has had been delivered me out of the law of spirit and death and the Holy Spirit is not just clapping your hands and it is the power which will be giving an overcoming nature upon sin and death not only in your mind, you are a holy man, even in your flesh, you should lead a holy life how the people who have been baptized are leading their lives according to the last verse of the Romans chapter 7 they are leaving their life in their mind for God but in the flesh, they are serving the sin but man who have been baptized of Holy Ghost, what does he do? even in his mind and flesh, he has been changed as a saint and holy man when the Holy Spirit comes that is changing the man as a holy man the spirit of God is mortifying all his deeds through the spirit are you the believers? look up on Acts of the Posters chapter 19 verse 2 when you are being believers, have you received the Holy Ghost? and they replied like this, that we have not heard about that they have been baptized but they have not got the correct baptism that is why the Holy Spirit was not able to descend upon them beloved friend, you should have to step in the correct manner in the Holy Spirit when you are receiving that proper anointing, you are mortifying the deeds of your body the Holy Spirit will move upon you the power of the most high will be shadowed upon you then one thing will be formed inside you, will be holy that is why without the Holy Spirit, he can be changed as holy holy baptism and the Holy Spirit is coming in together and have all you been baptized who are been received the baptism if it not be so, you cannot overcome the sin we need the proper anointing in these days without anointing, the people will be failed because we don't know in what time the Satan will come because of the provocation of the Holy Spirit, Samson is going what happened there? a lion came and he turned it immediately the reason is, the Holy Spirit which was inside him in that place, if he might not have an anointing, what might have happened there? it might have torn him and he might not be there and after tearing the lion, he is going into the sheep and that another lion is catching him Holy Spirit is delivering both the lamb out of the lion and he is delivering him also with anointing, he is standing against Goliath in all the occasions when you are striving or fighting without anointing, you cannot overcome if you don't have the knowledge and in Isaiah, it had been told like this, the Holy Spirit is the spirit which will give you the wisdom if you don't have the fear of God and the spirit of God which will give you the fear of God will come upon you do you say like this, that I don't have enough strength to live for God? as according in Zechariah chapter 12, he will come as the spirit of grace do you say like this, I don't have a proper prayer life? in Zechariah chapter 12 verse 10, the spirit of prayer will come upon you do you say like this, I don't have enough courage to preach? he will be giving the spirit through the spirit of preaching when that spirit comes upon you through that spirit, you will be having your courage to preach the wisdom you will be having the enough power to preach the wisdom when the proper anointing is coming in you you will drive away the demons you will be changed as a warrior of faith when the proper faith comes you will be healing the sick and out of you, the power to do miracles will go and there are mighty things which will be done by the spirit of God through ordinary man through the mighty works which is being done by the Holy Spirit, I am always striving as you are thinking, just clapping your hands and dancing, with that, the Holy Spirit is enough, it is not so do you know the mighty work of this Holy Spirit? not only mortifying the deeds of your flesh by the spirit of God, we are being transfigured by the glory of God when the Holy Spirit is coming upon you, your life is transfigured your speaking will change and your sight, your view will change your walking will change your dress will change and your all formations will be changed little by little, the Holy Spirit will be doing the work of transfiguration in you how many of you have received the Holy Ghost today? as you are being feeling in the anointing yesterday, I will not call that as an anointing do you know when the Holy Spirit was descending upon the upper chamber, how the people were there? I read in a book it was like a church caught on fire and as a man who was looking upon it, he called upon the fire stay and that church is burning when the fire service is coming there, they were looking upon the church inside, the prayer was going everybody were anointed there and a gentle man, when he was looking upon the church, it was as if it was caught by fire and if you are having the proper anointing, a man who is possessed with the devil, besides you, will be saying he is having the fire in Zion he is having the flame in Jerusalem and the Holy Spirit will be coming upon you as a wind of fire when that spirit is coming here, this place will not be enough for us it is a power which will transfigure all your power and your desire and your sight and all everything of you when this Holy Spirit come upon you that man is changed as a saint and what kind of miserable man he may be, but he is changed and Saul who was persecuting the holy people and Saul who had accepted to kill Stephen and Saul who was crying like this, am I a wretched man? and Paul who was crying like this, in myself, the sin is dwelling now he says, by that spirit, I am transfigured that spirit of life is working in me that is why when you are anointed, you should not feel shy if you are, when you are anointed, if you are feeling shy, that is an evil spirit and when you are being anointed, you should not control yourself and there is a verse for that, till I control
or a faithfulness
there are many reasons for the believers and the servants of God to be withered and that is because of controlling the anointing they are thinking like this, that the vessels which are not fulfilled will not dance till you are controlling, the corpuscles of your bones are withered all the cells that are found in the bones are died even after that, if you are trying to be filled in the Holy Spirit, your body will not accept you should have the correct anointing only with the correct anointing, you should finish your race if you have the correct anointing, all the demons will be fleeing away only for a limit, it will be in your house you might have heard the testimony of our pastor T U Thomas before he was changed as chief pastor, he was doing his ministry in Mumbai because of diabetes, he was affected and they told he will die and even he was purging himself suddenly, when he was not able to attend the four o'clock morning praising and anointing, came upon him and out of himself, a black figure came up and he was looking upon him and from heaven, there was a voice, this was a diabetic which was striving with you until now, he was thinking like this, this diabetic is taking us towards Zion, but now he is looking upon this as a spirit he rubbed up the spirit suddenly with an anointing that left the faithom and it was passing on the way of Sikhs that day, he got the deliverance he told I was healed everybody asked him to check I don't want to check my God and my diabetic had been healed do you know what happened? within few months, he was transferred to the and without any way, he should have to go on to the medical checkup in that checkup, he was not even having the smell of the diabetic anointing is a life which will be breaking our yoke if you have the spirit which has resurrected Jesus Christ, which is dwelling upon you, he is quickening you even at this evening the spirit which had resurrected Jesus Christ out of the grave and the tomb, in which he was waiting for the resurrection, if that is found in Amish, he will be resurrected he is commanding unto the unclean spirits which are striving with your life beloved friend, he is commanding you to depart to the other side he is commanding that you may be repented he is commanding to the water which is striving against your life journey he is commanding to the sea which is striving against your life journey he is commanding to the sins and the burden which are striving with your life he is commanding tonight, that you may get the proper baptism above everything, he is commanding that you may be anointed with the Holy Ghost even tomorrow, the Lord will command in this evening, how many of you want to overcome with the power of God? Holy Spirit is making a defeated man to attain victory the Holy Spirit is lifting up a man who had been fallen down people who want such a Holy Spirit, be on your knees and close your eyes and our God is a God who will make you to attain victory in all the places don't think that you should have to catch hold of the bus, just close your eyes for five minutes or ten minutes, please be on your knees properly do you know the miracle which the Lord Jesus is going with you? he is rebuking the wind and the water which is striving against your life and those who are, and those who are sitting in the chairs also, that if you are able to be on your knees, you can do that and properly, correctly, the Lord is making this wind and the water to go away from your life your suppression is found in your mind, the Lord is rebuking that in this meeting a great burden was suppressing your heart, the Holy Spirit is making you to go away and are you ready to obey to the truth today? and are you able to obey, submit yourself for the truth? the Holy Spirit is going to descend upon you boys, girls, elders and believers, servants of God, whom I am, you may be, the Holy Spirit is going to shower his might upon you Lord, I want to get victory in my life another name for this Holy Spirit is the spirit of victory and he will be changed as a holy person, he will attain victory from such a failure how many of you want to attain victory? I want to attain victory in my ministry I want to overcome in my family life I want to overcome in my business I want to overcome in the life of faith I want to overcome the sin which is striving against me I want to overcome the Satan I want to overcome the burden which is striving there is only one solution for this, is the Holy Spirit it is not by your might it is not by your power it is by my spirit, the Lord says where the spirit of God is, there is liberty power of God may descend upon us right now all the unclean spirits are running away the sin and the burden which was striving with you is living he is commanding against the wind and the water which is striving against your life no power can overcome you till the day you are in this world, no man will resist you all the fiery weapons which are risen against by the evil against you, will be quenched by the spirit spirit of God is going to make the things which are, you are not able to do all things which are impossible, you are going to be hosted when the spirits are rising against you, the Holy Spirit will be hosting the banner
amen I want a power which will make us, make myself to get a victory Valibarale, ningal pollanganir jaykala.
Young people, you can overcome the evil person.
Adukor abishayagam irukkara.
For that, there is an anointing.
Arumiana sagodara sagodigale, kudumbathila poruparukkavale, ungal kudumbavalkaila jebikke jaykala, adukor alamay irukkara.
Beloved brother and sister who are in charge of your family, there is a spirit, there is a power, you can take victory.
Tholil adhibargale, ungal tholilgalil ningal jaykala, adukor akkini abishayagam irukkara.
Business magnus, you can overcome in your business, there is a spirit or anointing.
Siyoonil nerupu edayavare, vandrukara.
Fire of Zion, one who is having that had come down.
Amen, oru akkini erangukara.
The fire is descending.
Ni jayipoy.
You will overcome.
Thidabaaka, 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 raabaka, thidobanyaa. Hallelujah, inda abishayagam bodadu, devanadi avi, pratthiyachamai, unmel vande erangukara.
The spirit of God is vehemently coming upon you.
Thidabaaka, thidabaaka, raabaka, thidobanyaa. Hallelujah, hallelujah, abishayagatla adakkivakadige.
Do not control the anointing.
Aviyanavar kattupaduthathadige.
Do not suppress the Holy Spirit.
Avar kodiyathu, avaruka anumadi kodinna.
Permit him to make the host.
Thidabaaka, thidaba, oru onakul kodiyathu.
Let him hoist the banner in you.
Thidobanyaa, thidobanyaa, shaba, hadibana, baakath. Amen, unudiyasariyaveyadani, ni nokipathukundrukara.
You are looking upon the pains of your bodies.
Naano, adu undupadukura avi, nokipathu kadindukundrukara.
But I am looking upon the spirit which is creating, that I am rebuking that.
Ni sherechalaiparkara, naan sherechalin, asti bharate, asaika parkara.
I am, you are looking upon the presence, but I am looking upon the foundation of the presence to be shaken.
Ni erigovin, kotayiparkara, naan erigovin, kotayiputakiparkara.
Ah, you are looking upon the foundations of Jericho, but I am looking upon the foundations of Jericho to be broken down.
Thidobanyaa, thidobanyaa. Amen, amen, ah, naan, naan adhimai, thochoo pona oru nabar.
I am a person found as a defeated one.
Na anega edathla, talaguninja venditaa.
In many places, I bowed my heads.
Indimal, ennal vikka padamudiyadade.
And after this, I cannot live.
Enak esu odhuviseenun cholruvanga, kaygalavaidhinga.
Jesus should help me, you can lift up your hands.
Amen, unudiyaveyadani, kather pathukundrukara.
Lord is looking upon your pain.
Onakavare chollukara, vaathay enna dhirima?
Do you know the word which he is telling unto you?
Ni muttum jayipai.
You will overcome completely.
Ah, konjamala, muttum ni jayaliyai, uninaan machuvai.
Not for few aspects, you will be changed as a complete overcomer.
Namil anbu gurukaravare, muttum jayangolugurau.
We are overcoming by the loving God.
Raabala, shabala, baakka, raabaka. Daariyamai, munne nichaluaya.
Boldly go forward.
Ulagathil irukkavani, unakul irukkavare, periavare.
One who is in you is greater than the one who is in the world.
Ulagathil irukkavani, unakul irukkavare, periavare.
One who is in you is greater than the one who is in the world.
Esu ulagathai jaita.
Jesus overcame this world.
Esu satanai jaita.
Jesus overcame Satan.
Rivalaka, raabaka, thidobanyaa, amen. Thochoo poy, thochoo poy, valkain viraktiil vilimbilanindre, Paul chollukara vaathai, nirpanthamanan manushan naan, yaar enay vidhalai akkukudu.
Being defeated on the shore of his life, the Paul says like this, that, rich man am I, who can deliver me out of this body sin.
Innan konjanal kalichu, oru dey arikke enna dhirima?
After a few days, what was his confession, you know?
Naan alla, paavame, enakul irukkara.
It is not I, but the sin is dwelling inside me.
Ana ade, Paul, abishayagam betti, valkaila valarundu buludhe.
But same Paul, after getting anointing, when he is growing.
Enay bala padukkara kristvinal, ipuludu, ellavatim cheyya enakubalan undu.
With the Lord which is remembering me, I will be able to do everything now.
Amen, ade, wallamay ipuludu namadhiyamatiyala vandrukara.
Same power had come down in our midst also.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, amen. Enay bala paduthum kristvinale, ellamsai needa belan undu enak. Enay bala paduthum kristvinale, ellamsai needa belan undu enak. Satur siri, millampol vandalu, satyare, jaya kodiyesu. Satur siri, millampol vandalu, satyare, jaya kodiyesu. Enay bala paduthum kristvinali, ellamsai needa belan undu enak. Amen, enay bala paduthum kristvinali. Ellamsai needa belan undu enak. Satur siri, millampol vandalu, satyare, jaya kodiyesu. Jaya kodiyathuvar, hallelujah, aviyanavar kodiyathuvar. Millampol vandalu, satyare, jaya kodiyesu. Enay bala paduthum kristvinali, ellamsai needa belan undu, undu, undu. Enay bala paduthum kristvinali, ellamsai needa belan undu enak. Satur siri, millampol vandalu, satyare, jaya kodiyesu. Thidobanyaa, thidobanyaa. Satur siri, millampol vandalu, satyare, jaya kodiyesu. 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 Satur siri. Hallelujah, amen, hallelujah, hallelujah. Thidabaaka, thidobanyaa, thidabaaka, thidobanyaa. Hallelujah, raabaka, raabaka, thidobanyaa, hallelujah, amen, amen. Enay bala paduthu oru wallamay, inda kootathila enakukadaitukkara, sonruvanga, kaygalavaidhinga.
Lift up your hands, you are saying like this, that I have got a power, that I can overcome in this world.
Periyamalavale?
Beloved ones?
Onu dhirima?
Do you know one thing?
Ulagathila manushan cholluva, vettim, tholviyam, valkaila vandu, 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 poikundrukunna.
In the world, a man will say like this, a man will be facing both defeats and success.
Idu valkaila sakajamani cholitthurvanga.
And they will be teaching us that it is ordinary thing.
Ana ondru naan cholukara.
But I want to tell you one thing.
Kristo valkaila vettim, tholviyam sakajamala, ellai idangalile vettisarakappadukkavare.
In the Christian life, we will face defeats and the success.
Kristova valkaila vettim, tholviyam mari, mari varade.
Defeats and victories will not come as after one after the other.
Kristova valkai oru kachi valkai alla.
And the Christian life is not a life of politician.
Paul, Paul enna chodhar dhirima?
Do you know what Paul says?
Kristovukul, yepoludum, ellai idangalilum, engalai vettisarakappadukkavare.
One goes getting victory in Christ in all the places.
Ettenavarka, appadi padu jayantavai.
How many of you need such a kind of victory?
Na, na oru chinnakoros cholittharai.
I want to teach you a small chorus.
Engum jayam.
Wherever victory.
Edilum jayam.
In all the aspects, you will face victory.
Yepodum jayamai.
At all the times, that is victory.
Ada, adha kristova valkai.
That is the life of Christianity.
Ni enga irundhal sari, ni jaykinu.
Wherever you may be, you should overcome.
Edila ni talayitthalu sari, angani jaykinu.
Wherever you are putting your heads, you should overcome victory.
Enneki naal sari, yepodu ni jaykinu.
Not only today, always you should take victory.
Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai.
At every time's victory.
Adukkaraanen dhirima?
Do you know the reason for that?
Karana?
Reason for that?
Ennil irupavare periavare.
The one who is inside me is greater.
Avar yaad dhirima?
Do you know who is that?
Avar ulagathai jaitava, satanai jaitava.
He had overcome the world and the Satan.
Na andu koros, ons padra, ninga pickupandikanga, sariyana oru abishayagathor da namudhipa.
And we are going to finish the meeting with a proper anointing.
Engum jayam.
Everywhere victory.
Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu ulagathai jaitava. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu satanai jaitava. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu ulagathai jaitava. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu satanai jaitava. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu ulagathai jaitava. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu satanai jaitava. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Ungal ettenaveer, inda devathai aaradikirunne, daariyama chollamudiya.
How many of you can boldly say that we are worshiping this God?
Akkini choolai, yel madangasooda gara.
The furnace of the fire is being made seven times more.
Oru kootan shirichikittunikiranga.
One group are laughing there.
Innorupadila rajal cholrar, vananguraya illaya.
In another way, king is asking, are you going to worship or not?
Avungan chunnanga, naangal idayvidamal aaradikkara devan, engalai tappuvika wallavare.
The Lord whom we worship is able to preserve us.
Inda akkini choolila jaykavaipar.
He will be making us to overcome this fire.
Singa gabiile jaykavaipar.
He will make us to overcome the ten plans.
Yadi padukaila jaykavaipar.
In the sick bed, he will make us to overcome.
Tarutharathila enay jaykavaipar.
In my power, he will make us to overcome.
Seivanay jaykavaipar.
He will make me to overcome the enchanting.
Ah, ettenavarka, ndinichemirukkara.
How many of you have this confirmation?
Devu seethu mulangal nikiru, cholruvake, karana dhirima, sariyana aaradunudhi adayala adu da.
I am asking you to be on your knees, this is the correct reason for the worship.
Naloor aaradunena, mulangala aaradunida.
And correct worship is the worship on the knees.
Sariya, naan thirumun, the padala paduva, ninga abishayagam pettinga, naa bhakya vandu.
We will be singing this chorus again, if you are receiving anointing, that we will be blessed.
Parath, parathil irundu, andu asirvadatin karam, inda padalodu, ona onda touchponu.
From the heaven, the blessing will be touching you through the hand with this song.
Bhaaram, porattam, dukkam, sanjala, ellai esuvi, naamathana, oodiyabada.
All sins, burdens and strivings will be going away in the name of Jesus.
Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu ulagathai jaitava. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu satanai jaitava. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu ulagathai jaitava. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu satanai jaitava. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu ulagathai jaitava. Esu satanai jaitava. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu ulagathai jaitava. Ennil irupavare, esu satanai jaitava. Ennil irupavare. Esu ulagathai jaitava. Esu satanai jaitava. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Esu ulagathai jaitava. Raabanyaa, eh, thidobanyaa, thidobanyaa, thidobanyaa. Hallelujah, hallelujah, esu, eh, jayam, jayam, jayam. Raabanyaa, raabanyaa, thidobanyaa, thidobanyaa. Amen, ni thochoo, nundu poy vandhai.
You have come here as a defeated and suppressed man.
Talay kavundu, kunyundu, ni vandhai.
Bowing your heads in a bent state, you came here.
Ana kather ipuludu, onakor jayathin wallamay, unmel erakke irukkara.
But Lord God has descended a power of victory upon you.
Indimal, ni nimandu nirpay.
And you will be lifted up evermore.
Oru, oru dripinda koros padina, innan enakor abishayagathikke, pude, valachia irukkunna cholruvanga, enna kaygalavaidhinga.
If you are saying that you want to sing this chorus again, you can lift up your hands.
Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Amen, amen. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu ulagathai jaitava. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu satanai jaitava. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu ulagathai jaitava. Ennil irupavare periavare, esu satanai jaitava. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Engum jayam, edilum jayam, yepodum jayamai. Wherever I am, wherever I am. 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 You must obey. You must obey. Amen. Hallelujah. Amen. You must obey. One spirit is thriving with you. Hallelujah. You must obey. Showing all the parts of your failure, it is asking unto you, can you take overcome victory of these places? It will be confirmed that you may be saved. Now I tell unto you. Open your mouth and say, "I will take victory in the place." Not only in this meeting, in all through my life, the Lord will make me to get victory. Now all the time in which I have been defeated in my ministry, I have been gone away. I will be getting victory in my ministry. I will tell you again. Open your mouth and confess, the one who is in me is greater than the one who is in the world. Ask you to proclaim this word, you should be changed as a flame of fire. (Singing) Wherever I am, wherever I am. Wherever I am, wherever I am. As you have proclaimed this word, you should be changed as a flame of fire. (Singing) Wherever I am, wherever I am. Wherever victory. Wherever I am, wherever I am. Wherever victory. Wherever I am, wherever I am. I won't defeat. Wherever I am, wherever I am. I won't defeat. Wherever I am, wherever I am. 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 I won't defeat. Wherever I am, wherever I am. I won't defeat. Wherever I am, wherever I am. 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 I won't defeat. Wherever I am, wherever I am. I won't defeat. Wherever I am, wherever I am. 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 I won't defeat. Wherever I am, wherever I am. I won't defeat. Wherever I am, wherever I am. 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 Amen. Hallelujah. Wherever I am, wherever I am. Wherever I am, wherever I am. Wherever I am, wherever I am. Hallelujah. Wherever I am, wherever I am. Amen. 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 The children of the world who were fighting in the war, Jesus came in search of the people who were making their life journey and they were troubled in their life. He rebuked the wind and the water which was troubling them in their lives. You have come to this meeting. The children of the war, they are fighting, they are fighting. Sodramanu. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord. The Lord is the one who is fighting, the Lord is the one who is fighting. He is the one who is fighting, the Lord is the one who is fighting. The Lord is the one who is fighting, the Lord is the one who is fighting. The Lord is the one who is fighting, the Lord is the one who is fighting. The children of the war who are fighting, the Lord is the one who is fighting. The children of the war who are fighting, the Lord is the one who is fighting. The children of the war who are fighting, the Lord is the one who is fighting. The children of the war who are fighting, the Lord is the one who is fighting. We are scared, we are afraid, we are afraid. To help our children, we are afraid. For our children, we are afraid. The Lord Christ who has brought us to this place, he is the one who is afraid. The children of the war, they are fighting, they are fighting. The children of the war, they are fighting, they are fighting. The children of the war, they are fighting, they are fighting. The children of the war, they are fighting, they are fighting. Wherever I am, wherever I am. 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 We are afraid, we are afraid. Oh Rabah Shabal Yankarabahu Rabanonya. Wherever I am, wherever I am. For our children, we are afraid. Wherever I am, wherever I am. For our children, we are afraid. Amen. Wherever I am, wherever I am. Wherever I am, wherever I am. We are afraid, we are afraid. We are afraid, we are afraid. We are afraid, we are afraid. Wherever I am, wherever I am. Wherever I am, wherever I am. Wherever I am, wherever I am. We are afraid, we are afraid. In the war, we will fight in the name of Jesus. We will fight in the name of Jesus. We will fight in the name of Jesus. In the end, we will be defeated, we will be defeated. We will be defeated, we will be defeated. We will be defeated. We are afraid. In the war, we will be defeated, we will be defeated. We are afraid, we are afraid. We are afraid, we are afraid. In the name of Jesus, we will be defeated. We will be defeated. In the name of Jesus, we will be defeated. In the name of Jesus, we will be defeated. In the name of the Lord, we will be defeated. We will be defeated, we will be defeated. We will be defeated, we will be defeated. Amen. Hallelujah.